Okay, in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled the Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of January 8th, 2018. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Star ledger on January 18th, 2018, posted on the district website. This is the official meeting. Will you all please stand first and flex?
... United States of America and superior body for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Cruz.
Mr. Valzano.
Here.
Mrs. Danjoe Martin here. Super hour. Mr. Klein. Mr. Kuzinski.
Here.
Mr. Russo here. Mrs. Valera.
He's here.
He's not. Mr. Sherman here. Mr. Carnesella.
Here.
Okay, can we have another rule in a minute, please? Motion perfect.
Motion.
We need a second. All in favor? Any correspondence this evening?
None this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Yamanis. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Julie Blazer for the introduction of our presentations.
So you have to give it back. So, good evening, everybody, welcome. This is a great night for you to be here. We are so very fortunate to have a group of students presenting tonight. This group of students last spring... Where is Grace and everybody? I don't see them. Where are they? James, Grace, Crew? Okay, I don't see any of them. Oh, there's James. Okay. Hi, you guys. I was gonna say, you must be here somewhere. Don't pay any attention to the guy behind the curtain. So anyway, last spring, the students in the TV3 class, right, started a documentary with Coach Kelly, Jim Kelly, and as part of the documentary, they had wonderful opportunities, and they made a full film that was just screened in Atlantic City last week as part of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame Foundation Film Festival and Teach Rock organization. Little Steven Van Zandt, yep, from the E Street Band, was there to give the keynote address to really congratulate all of the students on their work, and then he gave a concert that night, a fundraising concert for Teach Rock. Teach Rock, for all of you, teachrock.org, and you'll get to hear more about this through email and district correspondence, is a fundraising arm that provides professional development and curriculum materials for staff, all tied to music and humanities and culture. It is wonderful, and I encourage you all to go on the teachrock.org site and see what's available to you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to show you the film that our students made, have them talk to you a little bit about the process, and you'll have the opportunity, just like we did in Atlantic City, to ask them some questions. Dr. Riley? You back behind the pillar, or I can't see you? I do have just one other thing to share, and this is for the students. We did invite Coach Kelly to be here with you tonight. Unfortunately, he had football practice. He wanted me to tell you all that he is so proud, not that you just finished the film, but that you really took your research and turned it into something that was a full-fledged production. He couldn't be prouder of you, and he is looking forward to seeing you soon after football season. Congratulations.
Thanks, Dr. Blazer. So, obviously, we miss Coach Kelly, and we're still awaiting the arrival of our new teacher, which will be here in a couple of weeks. But as Dr. Blazer said, our students continue to do some great work, and tonight, we're here to share with you the documentary that we presented at School Boards Film Festival last week. And Mahal is here to represent the students. Can take any questions. So, while we're waiting, let's have Mahal introduce the students who were involved and what their roles were.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. So, my name is Mahal Manning, and some of you guys may know me. I have beautiful ex-teachers, so my current teachers. So, you know, we took our time with this film, you know, put a lot of effort into it, so I think it's credit to the people that aren't here and me too, I guess. So, our executive producer was Grace Pula. Our narrator was Zach Seidler. I was the camera operator. Mackenzie Moraski was our footage user, and Suprina Kuwob was our sound. So, you know, thanks to them, thanks to Dr. Riley, thanks for Mr. Kelly, and the Board of Education for letting us do this project and giving us the resources, too. Thank you, guys.
Nutley is full of unique cultures and talents, whether it be the arts and community events or the dedication to athletics. However, what makes the core of Nutley original is the foundations of music. American jazz sensation Jackie Paris was born in Nutley on September 20th, 1924. Throughout Jackie's childhood, he naturally had an attitude for vocals with dance and was inspired by Nat Cole King after serving two years in World War II to become a performer. In 1953, Jackie received the Best New Male Vocalist Award alongside Allo Fischers. Performing at live events and recording new hits between the 1940s to the early 2000s, Jackie never idleled his passion for art. He died at age 79, but forever impacted the musical history in Nutley. Jazz resonates within the core of Nutley and continues to do so through the progression of music. Part of this progression includes the early rock and roll of the 1960s. Aerosmith legend Steven Tyler shook the Nutley High School class of 1966 with his performance during the burn. While formally establishing himself into the music industry in 1970, Steven demonstrated his love for rock when he switched from learning to play the drums to focus on singing at a young age. Originating from New York City, Steven was with his vicinity of North Jersey where Nutley High is located. The 1966 class invited Steven and some band members to play on the stage, and 52 years later, Nutley High School students were able to once again watch the legend play at City Park Summer State Event this summer. Aerosmith also toured with another graduate from Nutley High in 1978, Mark Rides.
Hey, Mr. Mark, where's Elmer's name? It says Mark Rides and friends. Oh, Elmer got for friends.
Toured with T-Tree in 1985 with Mark Segway into meeting Jim Henson. As his works continued to air on the Jim Henson Hour, opportunities opened and allowed for Mark to create over 160 songs that were to be aired on Sesame Street as well as Songs for the Muffins. One song in particular would be rearranged as the Sesame Street theme song in 2008. Before collaborating with the shows that would expound his talent for songwriting, Mark was a musical pioneer. When reaching age 7 in 1964, Mark had already signed onto a record label with the single Natural Mornice. This same single was covered by Frankie Valli. 13 years later, Mark released 10,000 Year Old Blues with Steven Tyler. Graduating from Nutley High School in 1996, Leonardo DiCaprio has contributed to the name of Nutley immense. As a classical singer, Leonardo has performed at multiple operas including international events in the United States and Europe. A small selection of his premieres include the Royal Opera House, Teatro Real Madrid, New York City Opera, and Edinburgh Festival. After graduating, Leonardo studied at the Juilliard School of Music and the Music Academy of the West located in Santa Barbara. During his time away from home, Leonardo collaborated with artist and civil rights activist Lena Horne. Leonardo toured nationwide and is currently holding a lead role in the opera La Ronde. Not only is the musical culture exclusive to songwriting, but 2007 Nutley Hall of Fame inductee Steven Petronio is a notable individual for his choreography. Graduating from Nutley, Steven was able to found the Steven Petronio Company in 1984 at the young age of 20. Prior to this, Steven was pursuing a career in free medicine that had been inspired by dancers Steve Paxton and Rudolf Nuryev. After studying his artistic choreography skills, his efforts paid off in 2007 as radiohead provided scores for five songs to be used in an original battle, Ride the Beast. The Edinburgh Festival, taking place in Scotland, was not the only country that displayed dancing by Steven as his company was able to tour 26 countries including 10 or 35 of the areas in New York City. Cousin to Steven Petronio is rising star Michael Golebe known as Clams Cassino. Graduating from Nutley High, Clams Cassino has come a long way as he is one of the most in-demand music prodigies in the hip-hop world, working with talented artists like Lana Del Rey, Lil Peep, Mac Miller, and A$AP Rocky. Nutley High School was able to get up close and personal interview with Clams Cassino. He has recently collaborated with Jody on October 2nd, 2018. The song Can't Get Over You has accumulated over 3 million views and four days on YouTube.
It's just like a joke that my friend had said, and, um, but I just kept it because it just like is catchy and it gets attention and people like remember it. So it's just like, there's no like whole story behind it, but, uh, yeah, it's just like, it just sounds good. I guess it's just music that I was listening to at the time, like rap music and stuff that I was listening to at the time, and like I started playing drums and other instruments when I was very young. Then I got into, started listening to like hip-hop when I was probably about 12, and then a few years after that, just like wanted to start doing it. And I guess I was about 14 when I started doing it, so I just bought a little, some little like equipment, like hardware sampler and like hardware recorder and started making my first beats on that. It was probably like, yeah, when I was about ninth grade and at the high school. I, uh, stuff that I enjoyed in high school, like I really had fun, like photography classes, um, stuff like that, photography class. So, yeah, those are stuff that I had fun doing in high school, but, yeah. Just like a circle, like these kids started making music, not, you know, being influenced by me telling me that like, "Yeah, I've just started making beats mostly because of, or partly because of your music." And then it's like they're doing their thing for a couple of years, and then I eventually hear it and like kind of inspired back by that. It's like, which is pretty wild, so it's like it happens a lot.
Nutley is home to legendary individuals that specialize in countless arts and cultures. Stretching all the way back to the 1920s, Nutley residents have embedded themselves in history books. Jackie Paris and his dedication to jazz within his life created a foundation for many songwriters throughout the years. Steven Tyler's legendary appearance for the 1966 senior prom and famous work since then, Aerosmith, resonate with the rock and roll generations. Leonardo DiCaprio's distinguished awards for his participation in world-renowned operas have been recognized on numerous occasions. Steven Petronio's balance of being a company owner and master of the arts establishes rules that speak to the dancers and owners. And Clams Cassino draws out the technically younger generations and motivates them to be involved with their passions no matter what. Nutley's alumni inspire next generation to leave their mark in the world and act out their dreams. What will you become? From NHSTV3, 2018.
Thank you again for having us. Thank you to the board for your support and to Dr. Blazer for inviting us here tonight. Thanks again. Does anyone have any questions? At School Boards, the guys had an opportunity, and they were interviewed, a live panel interview. So, they were all seated in their director chairs up in front of everybody, and they had an interview process. So if anybody's got any questions about the process or what got them there, anything about the development of the video, I'm sure we can put Mahal on the spot. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next presentation that we have is for New Jersey School Boards.
That's awesome.
I know that. We're going to be postponing that until our representative gets here. She's not here yet, so we are going to, I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then we're going to move through the rest of the meeting. When she does arrive, we'll go back to that presentation. So, briefly, we know that we have a, um, an election coming up on Tuesday. There's going to be a referendum on that ballot. We are still going to have one more town hall, which is going to take place at the library on November 3rd at 11, at 10 o'clock from 10 to 12. At that time, we'll be available to answer any of the questions that people may have with regard to the upcoming referendum. Also, I want to encourage all community areas to contact the board, superintendent, Mrs. Yamanis, our communications director, with any questions that you guys may have with regard to the referendum itself. There still seems to be a lot of misinformation that is continuing to circulate throughout the community, and, you know, we just want to make sure that everyone is clear on exactly the outcomes that we're putting forward to the community. And it just seems to be a lot of misrepresentations of facts. And hopefully, after next Tuesday, we can continue our continued work with a common vision that enhances our community and provides the best outcomes for children and the overall well-being of our friends, our family members, and fellow community members. We seem at times like this to kind of get away from the importance of the community and the friendships that we have in our neighbors, and hopefully, after we get past November 6th, we'll have a little bit more clarity in the relationships that, and I know that we hold close to our hearts and relationships that we have. Thank you. We're going to move on over to the superintendent, Dr. Julie Blazer, for her report.
Good evening. I cannot believe, actually, how quickly October has sped by. It has been a full month of professional learning for our staff, our administration, and Board of Education. As Mr. Carnesella said, we will have our New Jersey School Boards representative, Charlene Peterson, with us tonight to do a follow-up presentation from the School Boards conference last week. Besides the students being there presenting, all of our Board of Education had the opportunity to participate in professional learning as well as our cabinet, Ken, Janine, Karen, Karen Yamanis, myself, John, thank you for staying and holding down the fort in case, you know, you know. It was actually a wonderful week. We had fabulous workshops and seminars, and there's a lot to share. For our staff, we really, I can't imagine, when I repeat this, that you'll remember that we did all of this. It was really pretty phenomenal. We had world language training, very exciting, very exciting. Math lesson study for all different grades in our Algebra I program. Both of those professional learning opportunities grew out of our program review recommendations, so it was very exciting to be able to follow through on things that are continuing to help us grow. We had English Language Arts Professional Development, grade level articulation, wonderful social studies professional learning, and thank you, Joe Dwyer, for kicking that off. I know it was kind of your first coordinator of social studies professional learning, but I know it went really well. We did student growth objectives and observation norming with our administrative team. We had leadership development, and as I said, board development. This kind of professional learning, if you're not one of our staff members, really provides all the staff. And by all the staff, I really do mean our specialized instructional support personnel, our paraprofessionals, office staff, custodians, I mean, everybody, with knowledge and skills necessary to really help us do what we're here to do, and that is focus on students. Our goal is student success, and every single one of us in this room are invested in the success of our students. The professional learning efforts that we provide are sustained, intensive, collaborative. I think for me, the most empowering piece is that they're job-invented, they're part of what we're doing, data-driven, and for our instructional staff and our teachers, they're classroom-focused. And the activities that are going to help us improve, and again, mostly in this case for the instructional staff, for increasing knowledge of academic subjects. We are understanding how students learn. We're taking the ability to analyze student work and achievement. We're looking at multiple data sources. We're looking at a number of different ways to analyze student data and see how students are progressing and learning. And that also helps us instruct better. It helps us to monitor and adjust. It helps us to actually change our delivery of instruction and maybe even some of the instructional strategies that we're using, and to look at the assessments we're using. All of those, and all of that kind of analysis is really an integral part of our whole school-wide and district-wide educational improvement plan. It's part of our strategic plan, it's part of our goals, our vision and mission, and we never take our eye off that goal, no matter what we're doing. I have to say again, we have a lot of staff in the room tonight. You already know this is hard work, I don't have to tell you that. And it makes us all better. So, since you're here, I'll say thank you to all of our staff, and to the board as well, for being lifelong learners and always doing whatever it takes to keep moving our students forward. This month, we also began our Strategic Action Plan Committee meetings. That was pretty exciting to be a part of. There are mixed groups of staff, board members, community members, students, all coming together to set our first-year goals in our strategic plan areas of curriculum, health and wellness, configuration and infrastructure, and safety and security. Again, it was a really exciting time to be able to collaborate, but it's also, for me, a very powerful process to be able to continue the positive growth that began with the last strategic plan five years ago. I'm really proud to be able to help continue that momentum that all of you started. There's a lot still coming up. You wouldn't think so, October's almost at the end, but no. Coming up this week, just this week, tomorrow night is the Board of Commissioners meeting. We're planning to be there, we hope you are too. There's also Spring Garden PTO meeting tomorrow night. We have Halloween on Wednesday. Please remember that for elementary students on Wednesday, there is a 12:30 dismissal. Students are invited to come back to school in costume at 2 o'clock for their classroom parties, followed by the Halloween parades. Those parades, some of the routes have changed, so please make sure you follow the guidance that was sent to you last week. It's also posted on the district website. And please also remember there'll be a regular dismissal. You won't be able to take your children early from the parade. Thursday, can't believe it, brings us the first day of November, which is just unbelievable. That is also the Washington PTO meeting and the League of Women Voters Candidate Night. Saturday, December 3rd, as Mr. Carnesella just said, we do have another town hall. This one is at the Nutley Public Library from 10 to 12. And even better than that, not that that won't be a great thing to get up and be part of, but after that, we have the exciting football matchup in the Oval that was announced today between our Nutley Raiders and the Belleville Buccaneers that will kick off at 1:30. Please remember to bring canned goods for the food pantry. I think Swar is going to talk a little bit more about that. But please bring those with you to the game. And also, don't forget to turn your clocks back. It's time to fall back. Next Monday, there's another Board of Education meeting. There will be presentations on requested topics, people who sent us questions and asked for presentations. So, Kent Mania, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, 612, Tracy Egan, our middle school principal, they're going to be talking about middle school and our sixth-grade pilots. And we'll also have Dr. Jess Choza and Joe Dwyer, because he's a trooper, talking about our One to One Chromebook Initiative and what that brings to the district. On Tuesday, of course, is Election Day, but also on Tuesday night, we're going to have a wonderful presentation at Washington School beginning at 6:30 PM. Jen Baker, who is, if you haven't seen him, a tremendous speaker, a wonderful speaker for everybody, whether you have special needs children or not. The message is amazing, and pizza will be served. So there's dinner also at 6:30, Washington School Auditorium. My final comments are very similar to Danny's. It's a tough time in the world today. You hear me at every single meeting. Some of you come to all the meetings, so you know what my message is going to be, about neighborliness and kindness and thinking before you speak. But this time, I really have to take a moment and say, kind of emotionally, there's a lot broken in our world. No matter what side of an issue you're on, no matter what your opinion is, it does not take very much effort to have respect for someone else's opinion, to agree to disagree, and to remember that, okay, Election Day is Tuesday, but then it's over. You're not enemies, you're neighbors. What's going to happen on Wednesday? You still have to face each other and be here in the community. Please, please remember that there's nothing more important than the fabric that you've already woven together. We're here for a common goal. We're all here for the same reason. We might come about it in different ways. We might have different ideas about how to accomplish it, but we're all here for the same reason. We all live and work and honor Nutley as a Board of Education, as a superintendent, as a staff. We're here to provide the best education for students possible. And again, however we get there, we can agree to disagree and have respect, but please remember we're all on the same journey. We all have the same purpose. We all have the same why. And try, try and remember that when you, when you see your neighbor on the street. Try and remember to smile and at least acknowledge that the person is standing in front of you. I'll leave you with that. Have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. We're going to move on over to our Board Secretary report, Mrs. Karen Yamanis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yours isn't working, I think mine's way up. We have concluded the onsite audit for June 30th of 2018. for June 30th of 2019. The auditors are currently putting together the final report, and they will be making a public presentation, most likely at our December Board meeting. We are currently in the midst of preparing the 2019-2020 budget. I know the administrative team is working on finalizing all of their budget requests so that we can begin to review and create the budget document. We should have a draft budget to begin sharing with the public as early as February. And I'd also like to acknowledge some of the donations that the Board is accepting this evening. Primarily, a donation, a continuous donation that comes in to the high school from Mr. Robert Martson. And we also received numerous file cabinets, office chairs, easels, and these great colorful comfy chairs, which I'm sure quite a few of you sitting here in the audience tonight are happy to have in your classrooms or in your buildings. And we would just like to thank them so much for their generosity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amens. And we have our student representative, Mr. Zohar Ahmed.
Hey, everyone. So I'm just going to run through what we, as a student council, are doing for our school. So right now is Trick or Treat for Humanity Week, and there's two parts to that. So first, we're having a spirit week right now. So today, Monday, was Breast Cancer Awareness Day, so we're all wearing pink. Tuesday is Dress for Success Day, so we're going to dress like a specific profession. Wednesday's Spooky Day, so we're dressing in all black. Thursday's Disney Day, we're wearing Disney clothes. And then Friday's Dress Like a Teacher Day. You guys can appreciate that. And then throughout all of this week, we're going to be collecting donations, specifically dish and laundry detergent and house soap cleaners for St. Vincent Methodist Church. Next, Dr. Blazer already touched on this a little bit, but we're going to be having a Constellation Football Game with Belleville this Saturday at 1:30. We're expecting a huge turnout, so we're planning a maroon out where everyone has a maroon to show their support. We're also going to be accepting donations for canned and dried goods. As Mr. Niko already put it this morning, if each person brings just one canned good, we can fill up that donation place to the brim. We are also now looking for a waste of fundraise as a student council for that day, potentially. Powder Puff is going to be held on November 18th, and a portion of the proceeds will go to the Melissa Centrolo Foundation. And then, this is our big news, that me and my fellow student council officers have been working on. So the event that we're putting together right now is called NHS Games Day. And how that came about is that me and the other student council officers went to a conference with other student councils of different schools, and we got together to talk about what kind of makes up our school community and what we can do as a community to do better. So what we noticed is that there's a huge difference in school spirit for our school and other schools. And the reason is that we don't have a plan that provides incentive for students to participate in their school activities. So as a result, we came up with NHS Games Day, which is a two-parter. There's a service component where the student body has to get together to volunteer as a community, and points are going to be awarded by the hours that they complete. And then after that, we're going to have a Games Day, which is kind of like a field day, and we're going to reward the student body with friendly competition and competitive games. And we are in the talks with our school administration right now. So, teachers, I think it's Monday that we're going to be having a meeting with you guys so we can talk about it a little more. That's just something to look out for. And that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. I know that you mentioned that you need to leave, so you can... Thank you again. Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports. We're going to start off with Mr. Valsama with the academic report.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to start real quick to thank Zohar and the student council for supporting Melissa Centrolo's Foundation. You should know Melissa's friend line. It's very dear to my heart, from the days of regular school to the moment she passed. So I appreciate that. The academic committee met on October 15th. Ms. Sherman, Mrs. Dancheck Martin, myself, Dr. Blazer, Mr. Banyan, and Mrs. Locan Solo. Dr. Blazer gave an update on referendum activities, including the town walls and frequently asked questions. Dr. Blazer provided an update on the budget development for 2019-2020, elementary budget overview, professional learning supplies, staffing requests, and rationales, text, curriculum development, and equipment are due November 15th, 2018. Mr. Banyan reviewed our ongoing lead partnership with another police department in our schools. Four officers are currently assigned to the five elementary schools. Scheduling was completed with input from principals, juvenile officer Mike Padilla, and Police Chief Strumaloff. Mrs. Locan Solo and Mr. Banyan reviewed the enhancements that have been made to add to enrichment, extended-day program. Yogas added to all five elementary school programs in the fall and have already been extended with more grade levels into December. Additionally, checkers and chess will be offered, and the TRPS program will be returning. We will continue to add enrichment opportunities throughout the year. Dr. Blazer reviewed the progress on hiring the school resource officers and school monitors. We have 14 candidates for the resource officer positions. First-round screening has been completed, and the interview committee has been developed. It's expected that a recommendation will be made for November. We have worked closely with the police as we have developed the interview process, reviewed the training criteria, and our memorandum of agreement. Dr. Blazer also reviewed the safety and security for Halloween. Mrs. Locan Solo and Mr. Banyan reviewed field trip and professional development requests. Dr. Blazer reviewed personnel and legal updates, including the job description for the Board Leader, Director of School Counseling, pre-K to 12. The next meeting of the academic committee will be Wednesday, November 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valsama. We'll move it over to Mr. Klein for finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met on October 16th in the evening. Sal Ferraro, myself, Ryan Klein, and Debbie Russo were a part, we met with the administrative team. Some of the agenda items discussed. Mr. Nicolet provided an update on the high school auditorium project, as well as the Washington School Secure Entrance. Also, the status of any of the district's work orders were gone over and discussed by priority. Mrs. Amens and Mr. Memorial reviewed the finance resolutions, which are on tonight's agenda, including the Radcliffe Boiler Project, the 2018-19 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, as well as the auditorium proposal. And then finally, we reviewed the 2017-18 audit. And then the impact of the 19-20 budget was discussed, as well as two years after that, budgets were discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Okay, we now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the Board in this section. We allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation 601 allows 20 minutes of these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the Board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, our anticipation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you've addressed the Board and sign with this conclusion before you take the microphone. First person that would wish to be heard on a resolution portion of the meeting can step forward. I do know, I'm going to just, I have a list here, and I'm going to assume that this is for the open portion of the meeting to talk and discuss any and all district issues. So if it's not, that would not be the time. If you're going to discuss something that's on the resolution center in the minutes, that's what we're asking for. Okay, seeing none. Okay, Mr. Valsama, would you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a group academic one through three as written.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzin. Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a group of administration resolutions, one, two, three, four.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzin. Yes. Ms. Russo, would you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a group of finance resolutions, one, two, three, four, 23 as listed.
Need a second. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Kuzin. Yes. Ms. Dancheck Martin, would you take personnel, please? Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. Not a discussion per se on that particular resolution. Just to make the audience aware that when we say yes when we move through these resolutions, there's been a large amount of time put in by the Board of Commissioners, the superintendent, and the administrator on the discussion to begin to the point of approving these resolutions. I think that's sometimes forgotten on discussion, time, and energy that's put into discussing our resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzin. Yes. Okay, I just received word that Charlene Peterson has arrived.
Charlene's here.
She is here? She's...
So Ian, if you could put Charlene's presentation up on the screen down. We're going to move down to the front. The Board of Education has the same responsibilities for professional learning as all staff. There is a required amount, you're not going to see me in a minute, but you'll hear me. There's a required amount that they also need to complete every year. As part of the goal-setting this year, the Board Retreat, goal number three from the Board was that they are going to try and help the Nutley community understand the roles and responsibilities of the Board and its members. There is, I think, a lot of misconception about the Board of Education. We are not the Board of Commissioners. We're not the Planning and Zoning Board. We don't discipline, we don't hire. So there's a number of things that we're very fortunate to have Charlene Peterson, one of the field service representatives from New Jersey School Boards, with us to go through that presentation for all of us as part of our professional learning and for the community. So Charlene, I'll come down in a minute and thank you face-to-face, but thank you for being here. Okay, well, again, like I said, my name is Charlene Peterson, and I'm from New Jersey School Boards in line of a field service rep, which means that I provide direct services to boards of education and training. I am responsible for all the school districts in Essex County and Morris County. So I just was at Long Hill Township, jumped in the car, and came driving over here. So it's my pleasure to be here tonight. And like I said, and like it was said, that boards need to continually get training the same as everyone else. And a lot of times, it's important to just take that step back and look at our roles. Look at the foundation of what we do. Sometimes, it's not only helpful for the community to understand, but for board members themselves to just kind of, you know, that reminder of the work that you do. So we're just going to go through what the Board's role is, the functions of a Board, what an individual Board member can do, the role of the superintendent in relation to that, and then just kind of some scenarios to put into life. So kind of, you know, basic, kind of simple way for a Board to help think of your role is to think about the fact of keeping the Board's telescope and microscope in your mind. So a Board, as they're looking at issues, as they're looking at situations, the lens that a Board should use as it looks at something is more of a telescope-type view. Because the Board is looking at things from a more strategic level. And then we would ask that the administration needs to take a much more close, detailed level of situations. So they would look at things from a microscope level. So a lot of times, as board members are sitting there and you're contemplating, is this my role? Is this not my role? You kind of think telescope, microscope, and, you know, help you kind of determine your role. If we break that down in looking at the responsibilities of each one of them, so like we said, the Board, we always talk about saying that the Board kind of should have that 50,000-foot view of what's going on in the district. Look at it from a strategic standpoint, focusing on the needs of the community, looking at long-term. And then the Board sets goals for the district. Once a year, the Board sits down, it was mentioned at your goal-setting meeting, that you set the what. What is it that we want to see accomplished this year? What are those four or five things that we think are so important that we're going to focus on them to help move the district forward? They're going to be in the superintendent's evaluation, so that's how we would hold her accountable to making that happen, and then setting targets for improvement. Then the administration then looks at it from a little bit different viewpoint, kind of more of a wider viewpoint. And then they're responsible for the how. How are we going to accomplish the what that the Board, you know, helps set aside in goals? And then from the staff, you're kind of the boots on the ground. You're the ones that are telling us, is this working, is this not working? Um, you know, and we should see some impact of that what, of those goals, taking place in the classroom. That any feedback, then you would give that back to the administration, and then the administration would give that feedback back to the Board. So, that's why we say that these are district goals, because it essentially involves everyone in the district. Um, and then, the staff, so then we need somebody that you have that view of what's going on today, what's happening in the classroom, what do our students need? Um, so, it's important, then, in order for a district to operate as efficiently as it can, that each group needs to stay in its own lane, that the Board needs to focus on that big picture, the administration then needs to help develop the how, and then the staff gives us the day-to-day viewpoint. So, you know, it's to no one's advantage if the Board is trying to do the administration's work, because then who's doing the Board's work? No one. So, we need to make sure, then, that each group is doing their own work as effectively as possible to help move the district forward, knowing that student achievement is the priority for all of us. Okay, New Jersey School Boards has one joke. This is it. So, how many board members does it take to screw in a light bulb? So, the answer is none. It should be up to the Board to say the what, let there be lights. That it's up for the superintendent to tell us the how. So, what, you know, what should it look like? What kind of a bulb should it be? And then, it's up to the Board to provide the resources, and then evaluate whether it's working or not. So, again, kind of another simple way to help remember our roles, and I mean, you can have some board members telling me that they see that light bulb in their head sometimes when they're trying to make decisions. So, and again, I talked about this, but it just basically comes down to the Board is the what. You know, for anyone that goes to any New Jersey School Boards train, that's kind of our mantra, that's the Board's job is not to run the schools, but to make sure that the schools are well-run, recognizing then that it's the responsibility of the superintendent, um, to run the schools. So, again, as we look at that from another perspective, so the Board is kind of, like I said, that big-picture strategic things. What's your mission? What's your vision? What goals are we setting? And then, we're providing the policy that gives those operational guidelines for the staff and administration to do their work. And then, the administration is looking at the objectives, the procedures, the action plans. So, again, it's the what versus the how. The Board's job is to vote on things, and that's how action takes place. And then, the superintendent will make recommendations to the Board, um, and then implement what is voted on. So, again, kind of, everything should work together in alignment. So, we have our mission and our vision, kind of core of what we do, then we set those annual district goals, and then there should be some correlation between those annual district goals that we set, and then the building goals that are set, and the goals that are set by other administration, um, and then there should be some reflection of that, what's going on in your classroom, so that the whole district is moving together in one direction. As we look at just the Board itself, and if we take the role of a board member and break it down into four areas of responsibility, we say to the Board that you're responsible for policy. The policy is what provides the guidance in the district. So, we always tell boards, you are a policymaking body. Board needs to make sure that you have the curriculum you need, that we're, you know, addressing the standards, that we're assessing the results, making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and then, tell boards, the single most important job you do is hire a superintendent, and the second most important job you do, then, is to evaluate the superintendent. That that's where the accountability comes in. That's how you help make sure, then, that you're providing that oversight and making sure that the district is well-run. You're setting the goals about what needs to be accomplished, then you're letting the superintendent do it, and then holding the superintendent accountable for the outcome. So, that way, as a Board, you are, you know, doing that, like I said, that high oversight, um, and, you know, making sure, then, that you're not running the district. And then, you're also responsible for the two-way communication. Tell the Board that you've got the eyes and the ears of the community. You need to make sure that the work that the district is doing is the district that represents the needs and the wants and the expectations of your community. If you think about the fact that we, you know, all throughout the state, we are all providing education to our students, but each, each community does it a little bit differently based on the needs of your community. So, we tell boards that you need to have, to do that balance of providing the very best education that you can for your students based on what your community can afford. What does that look like? How does that balance work? And that's part of the Board's responsibility, then, to make sure that that happens. So, one of the things that we are starting to learn or recognize is that Boards need to be interested or have a role in student achievement. Like, we used to kind of, you know, take that position that some students were going to learn it and some won't, and if they didn't, the fault was theirs. Now, we're saying that's no longer an acceptable position. We now have the responsibility to think that all students will learn it, and if they don't learn it, then we, board members as policymakers, that's part of our responsibility, too. We need to make sure that we have the resources, that we've set the goals, that we have set the stage for all of our students to be successful. As an individual board member, you need to make it clear that you, as an individual, have no more rights than any other member of the public. All of a board member's power, all of your authority, all of your decision-making ability comes to me when you sit together with your fellow board members at a legally constituted board meeting. Boardsmanship is basically a team sport. As an individual, the way you make a difference is how can you make this a stronger team? How can the Nutley Board of Education be a better Board because you're aren't? What are you bringing to the table? How are your skills and talents helping this Board be a better Board in terms of advancing the achievement of your community's students? Um, as an individual, you have first amendment rights, but you can't make decisions out of the Board or speak on behalf of the Board unless the Board authorizes you to. Um, and then have to recognize the chain of command. All of Board communication should go through the superintendent. So, a lot of times, there's a perception by the community that you can just go to the Board and they'll fix it. That's not the Board's role. The Board goes through the superintendent, that's the person that has the ability and the authority to assist. So, in talking about the superintendent, then, we can kind of take the superintendent's role and break it down into three parts here. So, saying that the superintendent is the chief advisor to the Board. Saying that the Board, if we're not in the schools, if we're not the educational experts, we need to depend on the superintendent to be that educational expert for us. So, as we're looking at situations, we need to take the consideration of our superintendent. The superintendent, if we're not going to be in the schools, should make sure that we know what's going on. We need to be informed about the important happenings in the district. Um, and then, you know, we said that the Board makes policy, but then the superintendent is the one that carries it out. How do we know if it's working? How do we know that that policy that we put into effect is actually matching your practices or what's in the best, you know, the best way to resolve something? So, we need, then, that feedback to tell us. So, like I said, the superintendent, then, is the executive officer, administers the policies, writes the district, is accountable to the Board, directs the staff, and then is also the educational leader of the community. So, it's important, then, that that person remains active in their professional development, is familiar with what's going on in current ideas of education, and then brings those ideas to the Board and the community to make sure that we're moving forward. So, if we take that as kind of a summary here, as the Board, we say that you have to respect the superintendent as a consultant before taking action, recognize the superintendent as the community's chief educational leader, don't confuse your policy role with that of running the schools, and don't surprise the superintendent. And that's one of, again, one of those kind of things that we repeat over and over, is no surprises. It's never in anyone's best interest when that be the case. So, like, if you knew that this auditorium was gonna be filled with people tonight, and the superintendent didn't know that, because there was something going on in the community, then we would hope that that would be your responsibility as a board member to make sure that the superintendent was aware of that. Um, but if you see, we see the same thing on the flip side of that the superintendent shouldn't surprise the Board. Um, so, there should not be things when I open my board packet about something that I'm going to need to vote on in a couple days. It shouldn't be something that we haven't talked about in committee, that we haven't talked about as a Board, that I haven't had the opportunity. I'm responsible for casting an informed vote. So, I need to make sure, then, that I've had the opportunity and given the information I need to do that. The superintendent should keep the Board informed, again, implement the policies, and recognize the Board as the final authority, convey that to the staff. Okay, so now, we're gonna just kind of go through some scenarios, and we'll see what we think. So, here's a situation where a board member gave the superintendent their evaluation of the teacher. Do we think that that's the board member's role, or do we think that that's micromanagement? That would be micromanagement, right? Tell the Board that you only have one employee, your one employee is the superintendent, and I think, other than that, it's the superintendent's responsibility, the administration's responsibility to do evaluations. How about a board member brings a communication suggestion to the meeting for full Board discussion? You think that's your role, or do you think that's micromanagement? That's your role. That's part of what you do as an individual. If you have an idea that you want to bring forward, you bring it forward for full Board consideration, and if a majority of the Board agrees with that, that that is a direction that the Board needs to go, then that's then how we would move forward. How about a board member asks the superintendent to prepare a report on the math scores in each grade? So, this one, while on the surface seems like, okay, you know, we're involved in student achievement, it's something perhaps we should be doing, the key here are the first three words, a board member. So, a board member should not be able to direct the superintendent or ask for information. We said before that the Board has no more authority as an individual than anyone else. So, similar to in the last situation, there was some information you thought would be helpful for all of the Board to have, then you would ask for it, you know, at the meeting, and if a majority of the Board agrees that that would be helpful information for the work of the Board, then that's then how the superintendent will receive direction. How about a board member receives a call from a parent about a facilities issue and promises to look into it? So, again, we've talked kind of about that chain of command, right? So, as a board member, we don't look into things, that's not our responsibility, that's not our role. What we know better than anyone else is we know, who do we refer them to? Who can help you? Who can fix the situation? It's not me, that's not my role, that's not my authority, but I do understand the chain of command, and I do know, then, how to direct this person rather than make any promises or commitments to help you myself. How about a board member alerts the superintendent about parents' concerns over a teacher's performance? So, here, again, we're not evaluating the staff member, we're just, this goes back to no surprises. So, we're not, there's no expectation that we do anything about it, but we're the eyes and ears of the community, so if there's something out there, we need to make sure, then, that the superintendent's aware of it. How about the Board insists on being involved in the interview process for new teachers? Again, I've said that the Board only has one employee, and that would be the superintendent. How about a board member is in the school questioning teachers about what professional development needs the staff? So, again, how would, as a Board, how would you find out if you had questions about the professional development needs of the staff? Who would you ask? The superintendent, right? That's who you could communicate with. And how about a board member responds to a staff member's concern aired at a public meeting? Again, not your role. So, here are some situations, again, too, as we look at this, of, here's a situation where the President opened the floor for public comment, parent asked to have her son transferred. Um, the parent's comments detail a few incidents during this discussion, the voice president voices agreement with this. So, again, as a Board, we recognize that that's not our responsibility. Obviously, someone has the right to make whatever public comments they want to make, but we have to recognize, as a Board, that that is completely outside of our role. Um, we are a policymaking body, and this clearly is not a policy issue. How about after the board meeting adjourned, a citizen called you and said he opposes the Board's plan for reducing arts opportunities, knows you voted against the plan, and wants you to help him get other board members and citizens to oppose the plan? So, here, as we look at this, you know, here's where somebody is trying to separate the Board, coming to you as an individual, but you, as a Board, you're a public body, your work takes place in the public, your discussions take place in public. So, if there is something that needs to be discussed, it is discussed in public, as we know your role as a public body. How about you just received a call from the superintendent, they'd like to recommend the promotion of a teacher to vice president, principal, and ask for your approval, and said they'll call all the board members. So, again, as an individual, so there again is treating the board members as an individual, and this would, you know, prevent you from having that discussion as a Board about, you know, what you think about this, because this is about personnel matter, perhaps this discussion would take place in a second session, but the point is that the Board, as a body, needs to have this discussion. So, as we look at you as board members, and look at your role, and, you know, there was a book that was written about how not to be a terrible school board member, so I just wanted to kind of bring up some things that you shouldn't do as terrible school board teamwork, and that would be, you know, humiliating someone, negotiating for the school, attacking the administration, micromanaging the superintendent, never questioning the administration. So, sometimes, you know, we say that that is your job to make sure that the school's being well-run, so in order to do that, you need to ask questions, solicit complaints, and ask for special treatment. So, those are all different chapters in the book about being a terrible school board member, and to one another, to disrespect a fellow board member, to speak for the Board, because you're not authorized to do that typically, to build coalitions, abstain on tough votes, be decisive and don't compromise, come unprepared to board meetings, and do too much homework. Now, someone asked me, how can you do that? Um, and I was at a Board where a board member had done all kinds of background research, I think it was about the yearbook, and the rest of the Board was like, we didn't ask you to do that, like, you know, why did you make all these phone calls and do all this work when no one authorized you to do that? So, again, we have to remember and make sure that our authorization comes from the Board majority. So, kind of in summary, as a Board, our four functions, our policy, planning, oversight and appraisal, and two-way communication. As a Board, we respect the fact that we're responsible for the what, and the administration is responsible for the how. Board of Education is a team sport, and the importance of communication with one another with the community. We said we're in that two-way communication, so just evaluate that. Then, just wanted to make you aware of some resources that New Jersey School Boards has on our website. Um, we have a document that fundaventures a school board membership that is accessible to you through your username and password. It's like a hundred-page document that has chapters on everything, like, almost like a how-to manual. Who does what in other school governance, following which procedure, and what your school board member needs to about policies. So, just so you know that the New Jersey School Boards is a representative.
Thank, still on? Thank you, Charlene, for coming. I know you ran here from another district to me here, we really appreciate it. Thank you for everything you did last week in School Boards, and we'll look forward to lots more presentations for the Board. Safe home to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And while the screen's going up, I have another piece of good news. Anywhere are you? In here? There you are. So, you can't miss this kind of good news. So, I got a flight in last night, and the first text that popped up when I came down the plane aisle, you know, when you turn off airplane mode, said that the Nutley High School marching band, um, came in third in the U.S. Bands Group Stick Championships, which... So, when you see third and you're like, awesome, and we clap and cheer, but wait until you hear this. So, the first place, Allentown High School, had ninety-four point five-five-zero points. It's a lot of points, right? The second place, Quantic, nine-three-point-seven-seven-five, so pretty close, not even like half-point. Then, we come to us, Nutley, at nine-three-point-six-one-two-five, tenth of a point behind the second place. Our marching band has worked really hard, has come to the games, has shown up in tournaments, and you have made us so, so proud. We cannot wait for Saturday's game and to see the show again. Thanks, Vinnie, all marching bands, everybody in class.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. Uh, real quick, Mr. Moore, I see you back there. How do we sound?
When you hear you, you can't hear Charlie.
Okay. Just check the other mics. Charlie's the only one you can't hear?
If he's over, he's over, and you can hear everybody. Just please stop.
Okay. So, Mr. Bassam, will you just check the mic again and see? Test?
I tested.
All right, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask to try to stay within his requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. As chairperson, and only may address the board members individually, please be reminded that if your statements are lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please, remember, to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign up with Mr. Boozer before you take the microphone. Um, the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward. Yeah? Just state your, just state your name.
Can you hear me? Should I be here now? Good evening. My name is Barbara Sarno, 236 Ridge Road, and I'm a paraprofessional in the integrated preschool program at Spring Garden. I have been working as a paraprofessional for seventeen years. Throughout my time in this position, I have worked in the LLD program at Lincoln, the ABA program at Radcliffe. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family and I know that that, that the people of this community feel the same way. My husband Mike and I moved here from Lynnhurst twenty-eight years ago this month, actually. Nutley was a desirable town for young couples looking for a place to go home and to begin their family. This district's reputation at the time was of high regard and everybody I knew wanted to live here. When we moved in, our daughter Gina was two years old and three years later, our second daughter Angela was born. As my girls aged through the Nutley school system, I was very involved. I volunteered as a class parent, girl scout leader for both Troop Forty-Six and Eight-O-One, taught CCG classes, sat on numerous committees revolving around school activities. When the opportunity came for me to join the Nutley school staff, I jumped at the chance. During the beginning of my career as a paraprofessional, I attended a wide variety of professional development, completed the required practices, and attended Caldwell College to obtain my certification in ABA training. Although these trainings have supported me, the best trainings I have ever received through the teachers have been through the teachers that have been placed with me over the years, or I have been placed with them, I should say. I am fortunate enough to have had the opportunity to work side by side with some of the best teachers Nutley has to offer. Throughout my time in Nutley, I have watched my two daughters flourish into amazing young women. Gina, who enjoyed choir as well as town and school plays, is now off working at Marvel Worldwide in New York and pursuing a part-time career in her acting. Gina and her, and my son-in-law Chris have been married for two years, currently reside in Nutley, and someday hope to send their children to our school district. My youngest daughter Angela was actively involved in schools, clubs, received multiple scholarships provided by the town, and participated in high school, school-to-career program where she affirmed her passion for teaching. Angela is currently a special education teacher at Danical and is working towards her master's degree at Montclair University. Along with the successes my daughter have gained, my daughters have gained, due to these schools, I have witnessed firsthand numerous other students within the special service department make strides for a better life. The teachers and paraprofessionals in this town treat their students as their own. I hope we can find a way to work together for resolution and continue to educate the Nutley school students healthy, nurturing environment. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good evening, board members, parents, and staff. My name is Victoria Gonzalez, 156 Albion Street. I am the school nurse at Lincoln School. I have been working in student support services for over fourteen years, bringing with me thirty years of nursing experience. My background is critical care, open heart, respiratory, and oncology. During my nursing career, I have been a director of oncology, a critical care manager, and currently a school nurse and still a nursing supervisor at Kyra Mass Medical Center. These experiences give me a unique perspective when dealing with crisis situations. As a nursing supervisor, I stay connected to the many dynamic situations and healthcare trends and advancements in the medical field. I remain informed and participate in continuing education to remain current in the nursing field. I chose to work in Nutley District. I consider myself part of the Nutley family and I know the people of this community feel the same. I am a team player committed to serving our student population and the Nutley community by enhancing their health through the nursing program. My goal is to impart health education that will enhance my students' health decisions. At Lincoln, I see between thirty to fifty students a day. I administer daily medications, do health screenings and referrals. I teach health lessons. I give monthly health and services to the staff. I keep students and parents informed related to current health issues through letters, student letter, lessons, my website, and my monthly bulletin board. As you all know, education is key. I truly believe, as did Dr. Jocelyn Elders, fifteenth Surgeon General of the United States, who stated, "You can't educate a child who isn't healthy and you can't keep a child healthy who isn't educated." Thank you all for your time this evening. We hope to continue to work together to educate our students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment because they deserve nothing less.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Faro, 19 George Avenue, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Lincoln School in this, the Nutley School District. I am a lifelong resident of Nutley and a product of the Nutley School District. My father is also a lifelong resident as well as a retired police lieutenant of the Nutley Police Department, and my brother is a current lieutenant of the Nutley Police Department. I have two children who attend the John H. Walker Middle School and Nutley High School. My sixteen-year-old son, diagnosed with autism, is successful and thriving due to the hard work and diligent attention to his well-being on a daily basis from his outstanding teachers and paraprofessionals of the past and present. My thirteen-year-old daughter is a straight A student and this is a direct result of the dedicated and motivating teachers that she has had in the past and currently has at John H. Walker Middle School. My husband works for the township of Nutley and takes great pride in his work and his ability to help maintain and upkeep this town. In addition to being an educator in this town, I've been actively involved as a parent in my children's schools as far as volunteering, fundraising events, graduation activities, in addition to attending my own children's Nutley rec athletic events. I am a taxpayer. My family and I are active members in serving our town and I consider myself part of the Nutley family and I know that the people of this community feel the same. I myself am proud to be a teacher in this district and consider it to be one of my greatest accomplishments. In my twenty-plus years educating in this district, I have taught kindergarten and first grade for most of my career. I take great pride in my ability to successfully nurture and educate students and work closely with their parents as they begin their journey through our school system. I've also had the pleasure of mentoring and hosting many student teachers, some of whom have moved on to become employed as classroom teachers in this district as well. I work diligently with my colleagues in my own school as well as other elementary schools in town to develop professionally in regards to understanding and implementing the many new and rigorous curriculums that we have in place for our students today. In the past, I have also been involved in writing new curriculums for this, this school district. I am proud to call myself part of the teaching staff of the Nutley School District as I feel that our dedication, consistency, passion, and pride in what we do with our students on a daily basis is not only inspirational but highly commendable. The teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff in this district are some of the hardest working people that I know. With all that being said, I thank you for your time this evening and I hope that we can work together to continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Tonyanne Faro and I am currently a paraprofessional at Spring Garden School in the ABA program and LLD program. I have been in this position for six years and I consider myself part of the family and of the Nutley community. My grandparents were from Nutley and raised my parents here. The community has been part of my family for many generations. My parents raised my sisters and I here and my father was a detective in Nutley for many years before retiring. We attended Nutley schools and remained here after we each got married to our husbands. My husband and I met here in Nutley and after we married, we didn't look anywhere else to live. We knew we wanted to raise our family here. Our daughters went to Spring Garden School where I ran the tribute trade fundraiser for six years. Once my daughters moved on to high school, I helped them with the fashion show for the class of two thousand seventeen and for this year's class, two thousand nineteen. I have been very involved with the cheer program for over ten years and they won their first competition in full field this year. While continuing to support my daughters and the events at the high school, I also am dedicated and paraprofessional focusing on the students in the preschool. I help the younger, the youngest learners in our district get ready for the next step in their education. I help them increase their independence by teaching them language skills which ease transition and to cease their frustrations. It's very rewarding when you have students progress so much and you know you were part of their progression. Thank you for your time and I hope that we can work together to support and educate our students.
My name is Laura Curry-Gianjeruso. I reside at forty-one Glen Ridge Parkway in Glen Ridge. I am a teacher at Spring Garden School. I have been in this position for twenty-four years. I consider myself part of the Nutley family and I know that the people of this community feel the same way. I possess a master's degree in education and have completed eighteen graduate credits beyond that degree. I am a recipient of the governor's Educator of the Year Award. One of the highlights of my many professional development opportunities was when I was invited to attend a course over the summer at Columbia University at Teachers College for the reading and writing workshop, the outstanding program we use for our language arts education here in Nutley. When I want to see the stars, I look no further than my classroom. There, I see the changemakers in progress right before my eyes. I also see the images of the changemakers have all, who have already passed through my room. Just two weeks ago, I was blessed to see yet another one of my former students working his way through graduate school. He will be opening his own business by the end of this school year. I have the audacity to beam with pride every time I run into a former student. And as my own children say often, mommy, your students are everywhere. And they are. They are police officers and teachers right here in this community. They are nurses and writers, doctors and artists. They are members of the armed forces. They are entrepreneurs. They are even mothers and fathers. For a precious school year, maybe even two, when I'm lucky, I am fortunate enough to be a tiny part of their journey. To them, I am forever grateful. My career as an educator has allowed me to wake up every day and say with pride, I'm going to school. My students, both present and past, know that I see each and every day as a learning opportunity for all of us. In Curryland, which is the nickname of Room Two-O-Three at Spring Garden, we have a saying, "We are whips." W-H-I-P. Works happily in progress, myself included. We talk about how the only limits to a person's potential are the roadblocks we ourselves put in place. My students know that I believe in them and the goals they set for themselves. I am sure the Nutley community feels the same way. Thank you for your time this evening. Together, I know we can continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name's Rosemary Haring. I live at one eighty-seven Ridge Road. I'm a paraprofessional at Radcliffe School for six years. Prior to this, I worked in corporate America in IT for twenty-five years and I felt the need to give back. I left my career to pursue a lifelong dream of working in education. I attended college and I graduated magna cum laude at age fifty with a BA in English. After several years of living in San Francisco and traveling the Pacific Northwest, I decided to return back to Nutley and make it my hometown. I started working at Radcliffe, the ABA students. I'm very invested with the students I work with and focused on positive results every day. Recently, I purchased my home on Ridge Road because I feel the spirit of community here and the true focus of its residents towards one another. Thank you for your time this evening and I hope to work together to educate the students in Nutley in a safe, healthy, nurturing environment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Ferran. I live in fifty Berkeley Avenue in Belleville. I'm a paraprofessional currently working now at the Radcliffe School. I've worked as a pair for eleven years at every school in the district, different types of jobs. I consider myself an important part of the school family and I know the people in the community who are inside. I was a financial analyst for twenty years, working at a portion of five hundred companies, having mattress screen accounting, and then ABA financing. I picked up into the second career of steering business through draws working with two partners. Here in Nutley, which is probably great satisfaction. Thank you for your time. I hope that together as a district, we aspire to educate our youth in a safe, healthy, nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Drappi. I'm at twelve Malvern Place in Verona and I'm a special education teacher at Spring Garden School. I teach in the resource room and in an in-class support position and this is my sixth year in the position. Even though I do not reside in Nutley, I still consider myself a part of the Nutley family and I know everyone in this room feels the same. I have an undergraduate degree from Indiana University and a master's degree from Montclair State University with a certification in teaching students with disabilities. I'm incredibly proud of my postgraduate work, in particular. I completed it while in the last trimester of my pregnancy and I gave birth to my first child, all while finishing my coursework and student teaching here in Nutley. I learned my craft under some of the best teachers in Nutley at Spring Garden School. Being with my students day in and day out is the reason I come to work every day. I go in early every day to make sure each lesson is tailored to reach every student according to their IUD. This requires so much more time than the forty-minute prep each day. Additionally, I stay late, well after the children leave, to reflect on my lessons, take notes on student progress, and communicate with parents as needed. See, my students require much more communication than the average student. They need feedback on their own progress daily and their parents feel comforted knowing that I communicate frequently about their child's progress and behavior. With this consistent communication, my students thrive. Like my colleagues, I take extreme pride in what I do. I have worked very hard to advance my professional knowledge through workshops, research, and collaboration with my colleagues. This has helped me to teach my students using alternative research-based methods while allowing them to access the curriculum and standards. It gives me great joy to share my students' successes. My students are often the ones with the lowest self-esteem. They often feel that they aren't good enough or they're too embarrassed to add... or they're too embarrassed to ask for help they so desperately need. I consider it my personal agenda to not only change their mindset, but erase the public stigma attached to students in the resource room. My happiest moments every year are when I can project for a student to move on from the resource room into a less restricted environment. Specifically, I can think of one student who I first met in third grade. She was an ELL student, hardly speaking, often not speaking at all. The cards were pretty much stacked against her, but I never gave up on her. Like all of my colleagues here, I refused to give up, and I knew that one day I could gain her trust, and together she and I could do amazing things. I now have this student as a sixth grader. Not only is she confident and outgoing, but she's been released from the ELL program and has been recommended to go to an in-class support situation, leaving the resource room. It brings me such joy to see these students succeed. This is just one of the many examples how student success can be achieved when the team of teachers, support staff, and child study teams work together, as they always do. You see, this isn't a job for us. It's not our career either. These kids are the reason we show up every day. We go to work for these students. We spend our days helping our kids. Our kids are the ones that we take care of every day. We don't just teach, we're nurses, psychologists, parents, caregivers, confidants, and of course, teachers, for our students. We treat our students like our very own children. Thank you for your time this evening. I hope we can work together to continue our work to educate every student in Nutley, regardless of age, and of self, safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Suarez-McNulty, and I'm the speech and language pathologist at Radcliffe School. I have worked in the district for seven years, and prior to that, I was in special education for twenty-four. I consider myself part of the Nutley family, and I know for sure that the people of this community feel the same. And they know, everyone who knows me knows I love my students like they were my own. I not only work in this town, but I live here as well. We bought our home in Nutley seventeen years ago because of the wonderful reputation that this district has. My three children attend our schools here. I have one in the high school, one in the middle school, and one in the Anacola School. I have two master's degrees, one in special education and one in speech. I was a teacher, I was the Teacher of the Year in my prior district. This district, this town, is very near and dear to my heart because eight years ago, my eldest daughter was very ill and hospitalized for a month. The staff at Anacola School, the families throughout the district, they reached out, lent a hand, and they didn't even know who we were. Her teachers visited her in the hospital. The school, they sent cards and gifts, and the families provided hot meals for my children while we stayed with her in the hospital. It was a true sense of community that I had never, ever witnessed before. So when the opportunity for me to work here came up, I jumped at it, and I was overjoyed to join the Nutley Schools family. So thank you for your time this evening, and we hope to work together to continue our work to educate our students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Gandolfe, three Fairfax Ward, and I'm a speech and language specialist at Spring Garden Elementary School. I have been in this position for five years, but for my first three years in district, I also traveled to Washington School. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family, and I know that people of this community feel the same way. When I asked if I would be willing to stand up in front of my town, my colleagues, and my Board of Education, I have to be honest, I was nervous. I just received tenure this September, and I know a lot of you sitting here and sitting behind me personally from my time here as a student at Anacola, the middle school, and the high school, or also with the connection with my parents or my younger brother Anthony. But then I thought of my students, my preschoolers, my babies. I teach them every day to use their words and to find their voice, and that's why I'm standing here today. As a student here in Nutley, not only was I a good student, but I was an active participant in multiple clubs, but specifically the choir and musicals. It was my love of music and the passion my teachers showed me that led me to my career path today. I went to Duquesne University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where I was a part of their five-year accelerated master program. It was hard, and it was challenging, but my time in the Nutley education system prepared me for that. It was my teachers here that guided and taught me how to be a better student, but also a better person there. Writing papers wasn't challenging because I had Mr. Fulcom for English in the seventh grade who drilled into us how to write a paper. Passing my introduction to math class was a breeze because I had Mr. Swanson in my freshman year who made sure we knew the basics of algebra. Who made sure we knew the basics of algebra before we left his classroom. Planning and prepping for my clients during clinicals or extramtships were never stressful because I was able to use my creativity during my time in the music department. And making friends was easy because I was taught by Mr. Walker that a good smile and a high five was a long way to go. Without the love, supporting guidance from those teachers and many others, I wouldn't be standing here today saying that I strive to be the same support system for my students. To help the future generations of Nutley students find their voice is a dream, an honor, and a passion that I can never effectively express into words. Thank you for your time this evening, and we hope to work together to continue our work, hope to work to our education to the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Donna Seda, and I live at twenty-two Fieldstone Place, Swain, New Jersey. Um, New Jersey, everybody loves New Jersey. I just would like to say that I've been a teacher at John H. Walker Middle School for the past twenty years, and I do too also consider myself part of the Nutley family. I love teaching history to the students of Nutley. I love seeing Zawar up here and many of the students that did the video. Well, former students, and just like one of my colleagues from another school said here, seeing our kids succeed means everything. I love to hear and see wonderful, the wonderful things that they've done. It gives me a great sense of pride. Even though I can't take credit for it, just knowing that I even know them makes me extremely proud and happy. I have a master's degree in education, plus thirty additional education credits. I'm a member of the New Jersey Council for the Social Studies. I co-sponsor the History Club at John H. Walker. I'm a part group leader and have been since the inception of the groups at John H. Walker School. I've mentored many teachers, and I also have had hosted many student teachers, which I'm very proud of. I love giving back and helping younger colleagues. In two thousand and twelve, I was both excited and humbled to receive the Governor's Award, the Teacher of the Year Award for John H. Walker Middle School. And I would just like to say that I thank you all for your time. I too hope we can continue to work together to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, nurturing environment. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Sorenson, one ninety-four Greenwood Avenue. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Washington School. I am a product of the Nutley Schools along with my five brothers and sisters. I chose to stay in Nutley and raised my own three children here. As a teacher, a parent, a homeowner, taxpayer, and a voter, I consider myself part of the Nutley family. I've been teaching in Nutley for nine years, having chosen education as a second career. I now have a master's in education and have completed fifteen credits beyond that degree. As a kindergarten teacher, I take great part in my ability to teach and nurture the students in my class as they begin their educational journey in Nutley. In my classroom, we are a family. Thank you for your time this evening. I hope to work together to continue to educate the students in Nutley in a safe, healthy, nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Tazira, and I have lived in Nutley my entire life, as did my father. I have been a teacher in the Nutley School District for twenty years, the last fifteen of which have been at John H. Walker Middle School. Having grown up in Nutley and still continuing to reside here, I have a great many ties to this community and consider myself to be part of the Nutley family. I received my undergraduate degree in elementary education and special education at Boston University. I continued on to receive a master's degree and the additional thirty credits beyond my master's. In Walker Middle School, I'm involved with Student Council, History Club, and DIANDRAS. In town, I support many of the activities of organizations such as the Walkerthon, Pride and Survivors, Nutley Family Service Bureau. Two years ago, I received the Governor's Award for Teacher of the Year for Walker Middle School. Now, Dr. Blazer, you've mentioned on two occasions the documentary about Mr. Rogers. In today's changing society, his message is ever more relevant. One of my favorite of his statements is, "In times of crisis, vote for the helpers." Well, I plan to vote for the referendum and feel like it does not matter how state the art building is, the backbone of that building are the helpers, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, and the support staff. They are always at the front lines, doing much more than facilitating a lesson. I'll leave you with this quote by the Irish statesman Edmund Burke. It's one of my favorites. It actually was written at my husband's elementary school in South River. "Education is the chief defense of a nation." Simple statement that it means so much. We talk about it all the time, actually. Thank you for listening to me this evening. I hope that we can continue to work together for the betterment of our school district and the education of our children in a supportive environment.
Good evening. My name is David Sorenson, one ninety-four Fieldwood Avenue. I've been a teacher of mathematics at W.A. High School for eighteen years, and I am part of the Nutley family, and I know that the people in this audience feel the same way. They're also part of this community. I'm a lifelong resident of the Nutley. Third generation, as a matter of fact. My father went to Spring Garden. My kids went to Spring Garden. I went to Spring Garden. All the same classroom, same kindergarten classroom. As a teacher, I like to think I've grown to the classroom experience from several jobs prior to becoming an education, but also the experience from two undergrad degrees, a master's degree, over twelve years of higher education. As a resident and a taxpayer, my three children have benefited from the superb teachers and education offered from this town. Two in college right now, currently in the Nutley High School. Also, as a former administrator of the district, I know that the value of the staff of our seven schools will make our district as great as it is today. And I hope that the people near and to feel the same way as I do about how great our staff is throughout this fine community. I thank you for your time, and we hope to work together to continue our efforts to educate the students of Nutley. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Strofachi, and I live at ten Lake Terrace in Nutley. I have been a kindergarten teacher at Washington School for nine years. We've heard the word pride a lot tonight, and I think it's safe to say that pride in our community is a common why that resonates with everyone in this room, everyone in our Nutley family. I personally am proud to say that I am a product of the Nutley School District, a supervisor of the extended day program. I have a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, and the support I've received as a lifelong learner from the Nutley School community inspired me to pursue a principal certification. The sense of community and neighborly care in Nutley that was touched on a bit before inspired my husband and I to also purchase a home in town two years ago. So I'm also a proud taxpayer and a voter. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I hope to work together to continue our work to educate our students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
Good evening. My name is Lori Catherine, and I reside at four eighty-five Washington Avenue in Nutley. I'm a paraprofessional at Lincoln School. I've also worked at Spring Garden and Radcliffe Schools. I have been in this position for over twenty-four years. I consider myself to be part of the Nutley family, and I know that the people of this community feel the same way. I've worked with hundreds of children. I have done just about every grade level two times and some three. I spent ten years in preschool, helped to start the original Lettuce program twenty years ago, learned to teach and read braille. I've been in many self-contained classrooms, regular ed classrooms, done inclusion, been a one-to-one parent, and several times over. I was awarded the Support Staff of the Year Award for Lincoln School last year. As parents, we also go to all specials with the children to help them in different areas of gym, art, music, and library. We don't apply for a job. We are put where we are needed, switched to different schools, different classrooms, different students, sometimes with no notice except a phone call that we are being transferred. We show up ready to go wherever that phone call leads us. I'm pretty sure most people would not be able to do that at a moment's notice, but then again, we are not most people. Just imagine. Just imagine that you get a phone call tomorrow informing you tomorrow that you will be reporting to the firehouse. Believe me, I've put out many fires of a human nature. I currently monitor a second grader with diabetes, help test blood sugar, test urine, monitor the highs and lows and treat his daze, and make sure he stays on task, all while navigating his death. I started this position last year on the second day of school because, well, I was asked to, and no one else would do it. I pretty much trained myself with the help of the school nurse. I come to work every day with a smile on my face and give two hundred percent every single day, as all of my fellow parents do. We hold the hands of parents and children. We speak for those who can't speak. We teach in baby steps and celebrate every triumph, both big and small, with them. Each student in our care is treated as our own. We celebrate birthdays, holidays, lost teeth, learning to tie shoes, zip codes, simple tasks some of us find very easy, but also difficult for them. We mourn their losses, cats, dogs, fish, frogs, grandparents. As we bring children back to the district from out of district placements, the job gets that much more challenging, but somehow, we are all up to the task with just as much dedication. It must be heartwarming to parents that we have their children in our care while they are not with them, that they no longer are traveling, sometimes up to an hour from home on a bus. Many of you can remember having to leave your child with a new person to be cared for and not knowing if they were going to be, well, taken care of. I can assure you that all of these children are very well taken care of but the village that we have become. Seeing the light go off on a struggling child's face when they master the simplest of tasks is priceless. We are vested in these children. Sitting in the corner with them during a lockdown, knowing that it's a practice, but knowing that at any point it could be the real thing is just one of the things that enters my mind as I enter my building every day. They know we will keep them safe. They trust us. Many things go through my mind while sitting with them, and it's nerve-wracking. Locked in a classroom with sometimes twenty-two little eyes looking at you, some asking, "Is this real? Is someone going to get us?" It's just an incredible overwhelming feeling. It's a hard position to be for us and them. No amount of money, none, is worth that piece of mind for these students. We see them all over town, ShopRave, Target, Costco, the nail salon. I love when they giggle and say, "Hey, you work at my school." Yes, Lincoln School is my school. It's a unique school. And the over five hundred children are my children. I know each and every one of you on this board. I'm involved in community activities that usually involve raising money for our community. I spend a fortune on candles, candy, wrapping paper, popcorn, Girl Scout cookies, birthday presents, stickers, and I volunteered to be the classroom parent, many classrooms without one. I stand here to give you a brief description of our responsibilities of these children, our children, grandchildren, stepchildren, foster children, nieces, nephews, all the children of this community. If we don't invest now in these children by keeping the current staff, especially the paraprofessionals in full-time positions, we become just one more adult who walked away from them, gave up on them, let them down, and here's why. We know how the morning went, so we are prepared for the afternoon, avoiding meltimes of sometimes effort proportions. Please don't let that happen. Just to give you something to think about before I close. The average teacher makes sixty-four thousand dollars a year. The average school nurse makes sixty-six thousand dollars a year. The average social worker makes- a year, the average social worker makes forty-eight thousand dollars a year, the average paraprofessional makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year. And I can assure you that not one of us is average, and some days, we are all of the above and ourselves. I'm a taxpayer in Nutley. I own a home, a building, and a business here. I full well know the price of what it costs to keep the current staff intact, but I also know the cost of not doing it. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope to work together to continue to educate the students of Nutley.
My name is Joanne Oldham, and I reside at Tua, New Hampshire. It's hard to follow, but I'll do my best. I've been a fourth grade teacher at Washington School. I've been teaching in this community for seventeen years, and I've been a resident for thirty-two years. Prior to becoming a teacher, I was a human resources executive for a bank. I chose to choose that, I chose to leave that position to pursue my lifelong passion of being a teacher. I currently hold a Master of Arts in Teaching, and I enriched my education by taking additional courses over the years. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family, and I know that the people of this community feel the same. Both my children are a product of the Nutley school system. My daughter is a social worker in the Ridgewood Schools, and my son is a commercial there in my father. Both my husband and I are active members of the community. My husband is the president of the Nutley Historical Society, AKA the Nutley Museum, and an active member of the Nutley Kiwanis. I have been an active member of both organizations, and in addition, I have been a member, volunteer of the Radcliffe School PTO, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and many other organizations where I have benefited the children of Nutley. I have never regretted my decision to live, raise my children, and to work as a teacher in this community. I want to thank you for your time this evening, and I hope we can work together to continue educating the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
My name is Kimberly Algeri, and I'm a teacher in the Nutley School District as well as a lifelong resident. I have been teaching fourth grade in Nutley for eighteen years. I have taught at both Lincoln and presently at Yanacaw Schools. I was born and raised in Nutley, as were my parents and their parents. I also am a third-generation Spring Garden graduate. Went through Nutley, well, the Nutley Middle School, High School. I graduated Nutley High, and I attend the Mullerburg College in the town of Pennsylvania. And that is where I did my student teaching. And I could have stayed there and I could have gotten a job in Pennsylvania. But instead, I decided to come back to the town that provided my educational foundation for success. I wanted to give back to the students of Nutley what I received before leaving for college. I continued my education, and I earned my master's degree in teaching and learning. At the present time, my own children attend the same schools as I did, and they're thriving. My daughter is in all honors classes in the Nutley High School, and my son is in sixth grade at Spring Garden School. And the positive learning experiences they are having can attest to the amazing teachers on their educational journey. My children are also very involved in the school and town-wide programs such as Treps, talent shows, art shows, Music House, library programs, history and science fairs, sporting events, dance recitals, the list goes on, and I support them all. And even if my children are not involved, I still attend to support my other children, my students. All of these programs are beyond the school day, but there is nothing that can light up your life more than when you walk into a room and your students see you there, and they realize that you're there for them, not your own children. And the Nutley students and children are actually there for me, too. For example, if anyone knows me, they know I love to knit and crochet, and my own children have no interest in the craft at all. So I have volunteered to hold lessons at the Nutley Public Library. On my own time, I have done clubs at school to share my love of the craft. At Yanacaw School, I have been a tricky trade-win, so I take the students at lunchtime on my own time and teach them to knit or crochet. In high school, I was also a varsity athlete, and I ran varsity track, and I loved it. So myself and two other parents were an integral part of starting the junior track program in town. I volunteer, I have volunteered to coach the last three years, and to be honest, the first year of the program, my own children had no interest, but my present and past students did, and I find working in Nutley such a rewarding experience. Nutley is a great town, and I'm honored to be such a valuable part of it. Thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to continuing our work together to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
My name is Joshua Dewall, 147 North Road, and I am a general music teacher at Yanacaw School. I've been in this position for seven years. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family, especially since my own two children attend Yanacaw School, and I know that the people of this community feel the same. My experiences as a professional drummer and percussionist have brought some unique musical experiences to students at Yanacaw, like a real drum set in the classroom, and both of my extracurricular percussion clubs, percussion concussion, and sticks and skins. I have earned a performance certificate on drum set from the Atlanta Institute of Music and Media. I concentrated in classical percussion while learning a bachelor of music education from William Patterson University. I completed the fast-track program at Montclair State University in educational leadership and earned my master's degree in educational leadership. I hold a teacher of music certificate in Pennsylvania and in New Jersey. I hold a supervisor's certificate in New Jersey. I hold a principal certificate of eligibility, and I passed the superintendent's praxis. I'm trained in, like, four hundred hours. I'm trained and certified in World Music Drumming Level One and Orf Shorwerk Level One. I was the percussion director for Nutley High School marching band for four years when we won our first ten thousand dollar check. My fifth and sixth grade percussion choir is participating in American Young Voices at the Predatory Center in Newark for the fourth consecutive year. I'm a teacher leader on the school improvement panel, who has created the building goals for Yanacaw School the last two years, monitored their progress, and designed and presented professional development for Yanacaw teachers and other staff members in the district that supported our building goals. I am the intervention and referral services coordinator for Yanacaw School, where I coordinate and lead meetings between staff, parents, and students, and we have streamlined our process of monitoring students' progress and referring them to the child study team. My community involvement includes teaching private drum lessons to students in Nutley, two of whom are at the middle school right now. I taught drums for seven years at the Nutley School of Music and helped to build and launch their highly successful, it's now a bi-annual rock show. I played the drums for two of Nutley High School's most successful musicals, West Side Story and The Producers. I coached girls' travels basketball for Parks and Rec, and both years led the team to a championship. Notice I said led. I coached the Yanacaw School Third Half Club Team, which has been to four straight championship appearances. Finally, I have begun coaching my own son on his Nutley T-ball team last year. Thank you for your time this evening, and we hope to work together to continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
My name is Stephanie Lemon, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Radcliffe School. I've been teaching for sixteen years. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family, and I know the people of this community feel the same. My biggest accomplishment is being a teacher here in Nutley. I'm very proud of it. Four of the accomplishments I'm proud of are that I have a master's degree in art teaching, and I was also given the Governor's Award for Teacher of the Year in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. I'm a working mother of three beautiful children. Oh, I live, I can replace their field. I dedicate a lot of time and love to my students of Nutley. I go above and beyond every day to make sure all my kindergarten students are learning in a caring, loving, and one environment. I am very proud and so honored to be a teacher here in Nutley. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope we can work together to continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, thriving, and loving environment.
I'm Marcy Dex. Good evening, Warner, 21 Glendale Road. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Spring Garden. I have lived and taught in Nutley for twenty-seven years. I consider myself a part of the Nutley family, and I know that the people of this community feel the same. At a young age, I learned what the place now in Nutley was, and all it had to offer to children. My grandfather and my father both were very involved in Nutley sports. My grandfather founded the Little League Charter in Nutley and coached many other sports in town. Their love for the youth in Nutley passed on to me. When I graduated from Quogue College, I moved to Nutley and applied for a teaching job. I was thrilled to get hired and live out my dream of helping the children believe they can do anything that they try. Throughout my twenty-seven years here, I held the roles of teacher, parent, mentor, curriculum writer, advisor, PTO treasurer, booster club treasurer, and best parent. I was a clerk in my education and hold a master's degree in education and a bachelor's degree in psychology. My husband, a lifelong resident, and I feel very blessed to have our son go through the Nutley school system. He learned valuable life lessons over the years, and I owe that to all of the dedicated teachers and staff that he encountered on his journey. Because of the impact they have on him, he is currently attending Montclair State and is major in physical education. He, too, would like to work with the children and help them become all that they can be. He is currently volunteering in district coaching with the Nutley varsity soccer team. He is also the head coach of the Nutley United U-15 Boys Travel Team, thanking all the staff that has helped him down this path. As a parent, teacher, taxpayer, and voter in this community, I want to emphasize that we need to remember that the children are our main priority. Their quality of education, safety, and happiness is in all of our hands. Let's steer them in the right direction together. Thank you for your time this evening, and we hope to work together to continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
My name is Janine Camparo, and I own a home at 29 Glendale Street in Nutley. I am a fourth grade teacher at Radcliffe School, and I have worked in the Nutley school system for thirty years. I have graduated from Montclair State University, and I have a master's degree in the art of teaching. Besides fourth grade, I have also taught second grade and fifth grade. In addition to my teaching certificate, I also have my media specialist certificate and served as Radcliffe School's media specialist for seven years. Besides my teaching duties, I have also been a student council advisor, a family math and science teacher, the cosponsor of two art clubs for students in second through fourth grades, a member of the local professional development committee, and I've worked on many curriculum development committees. I, like so many other people who have sat tonight, am the third generation of my family to live in this town. My grandparents moved here in the early nineteen hundreds, and my mother attended Yanacaw School, Franklin School, as it was known at the time, and Nutley High School. I attended those same schools, and I consider myself part of the Nutley community, and I know that the people of this community feel the same. I am so proud to be able to work alongside other dedicated teachers, paraprofessionals, and staff in the community in which I was raised. Nutley has always been a town that has put the education of its children first. It is where I acquired my love of learning, and I am honored to work every day to instill that same love of learning to the students in my class. Thank you for your time this evening, and I know we can work together to continue our work to educate the students of Nutley in a safe, healthy, and nurturing environment.
My name is Mike Stoffers. I live at 35 Sunset Trail in Deadwood, New Jersey. I'm also vice president of the Education Association of Nutley. Those of you who are here, still here, thank you very much. Your presence is greatly, greatly appreciated. A lot of people in this room went through the Nutley school system. I unfortunately did not. My first contact with the Nutley Board of Education was probably the first week of March in nineteen eighty-one. It was during that week that my wife went to Yanacaw School, our youngest daughter, and registered for kindergarten. That was sometime before the eighth of March in nineteen ninety-one. The ninth of March in nineteen ninety-one, where were you, Freddie?
Sure.
That's right. That was the night that I got shot in the line at the music police office. That was on March ninth. On March the seventh, eight o'clock in the morning, John Walker, whom my wife met for maybe two minutes at Yanacaw School when registering our daughter, called her up on the phone to see if she was okay, if I was okay, if the kids were okay, and if we needed anything. That's the community that Nutley is, okay? John Walker is the man who pretty much inspired me to become a teacher after that. He's the one who encouraged me to go beyond my bachelor's degree to get a master's degree. I know there are many people in this room who John Walker did that for as well. All three of my children went through the Nutley school system, okay? They all graduated Nutley High, they all went on to college. My son just received his second master's degree. My daughter is a school psychologist in Nutley. She loves working with the children. My daughter Rose, in January, is going to start the Massachusetts State Police Academy. She graduated Nutley High School in two thousand and eight, okay? This year, she asked Steve David Oreo if he would give her a recommendation to the Massachusetts State Police Academy. He did. Steve, if you're still here, thank you. As the Nutley teachers do, they work for the children. My children would not have gone as far as they have today without the inspiration of those people who they had through the Nutley school system. Thank you very much.
Michelle Cristantello, 20 Riner Avenue, and president of the Education Association of Nutley. Before I begin, I want to say I did attend that band competition yesterday. Vinnie, they are amazing. You deserve every accolade. The students should be commended. They deserved first. Those little hundredths of a percentage really meant nothing. They are truly the best, number one. Good evening, Dr. Glazer, members of the Board of Education, community members, parents, and especially the Nutley staff. Thank you so much for coming out today. Again, my name is Michelle Cristantello, and I am the president of the Education Association of Nutley, a group of more than four hundred members. Thank you for listening to our educators' description of the work and dedication that we bring to this district. I am honored and proud every day to be the president of this wonderful staff. You have heard from our paraprofessionals, teachers, and support staff members about their commitment to our students, the countless hours spent on extracurricular activities, and the level of education and experience that we bring to our Nutley schools. To most of you, these stories are not surprising at all. Nutley has always been proud of our public schools and has always taken pride in the accomplishments of our students and educators. Nutley has a history of being called a collegial community. The district has always had the support of the staff in any progressive move to improve the quality of education. In fact, even though we are still in the negotiations process, the Education Association of Nutley has given its continued support of the Board of Education's referendum project. But even as we show support towards this project, it reflects the improvement to the brick and mortar of this district. This project is just walls and classrooms. Without the equal investment of our staff, the building improvements will go unrecognized. It's important to remember that the staff are the ones that deliver the educational environment, not the walls on which the classes are held. Students appreciate the knowledge, creativity, and innovation of the elementary, middle, and high school teachers. They feel supported by the whole school community. It is one of the safest and most diverse schools in Essex County. As many of you know, much of our work extends beyond the end of the student's school day. We are continuing to do this even without a contract. We are continuing to do this even without a contract because we care. In previous years, the association has stepped up and helped out when this board has found itself with severe budget constraints. In doing so, our membership and their families have endured financial hardships as well. We have been asked to work harder, longer, and contributed to our classroom budgets out of our own pockets, even though our take-home pay has been greatly reduced. Our members can no longer afford to take home less pay because of Chapter Seventy-Eight. In previous years, the EAN has helped when the board has sought it. Now it's the board's turn to help the EAN. We have given for many years and cannot continue to give. We need a contract that will allow all of our members to have a take-home pay higher than the previous year. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, just one second. You can stand there. It's okay. You can stay there. I just want, now you, cramp your mic. Just don't say anything. So I just wanted to say just a few words. Couple of things that I'll speak on behalf of the board. If any of the board members like to say something afterwards, you're more than welcome to. But some of the things that I heard tonight, and I just want to say to all of you, we are really proud of the work that all of you do. And to sit up here and hear the words, "Children, community, education, safety, family, loving, nurturing, passion, mentors," these are all things that we as a board are proud to be able to hear from all of you because we are truly a family. And I know that I speak to many people about partnerships and coming together and getting things done. And what I can tell you is, on behalf of the board, we are going to continue to work to make sure that we can accomplish all of these things together. And I want to thank all of you, and I'm going to stand up, and I'm sure my board's going to follow because all of you deserve a standing ovation from this board for the wonderful work that you do each and every day. Thank you.
Rowan Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mr. President, I will be brief. Did Ms. Glazer receive... Is it on? Excuse me. Is it on? Mr. President, I'll be brief. Did Ms. Glazer receive a raise recently? And this, how much was it?
Hold on one second. I do have some information on that that we can discuss, and I'm going to ask my BA to step in at some point if I happen to slip off of the context. But... So as many of you may not know, but we'll try to give the information out correctly. Back in two thousand and ten, there was a salary cap on superintendents. In two thousand and seventeen, the cap was, the sunset changed the law. So all superintendents across the state entered into negotiations for the adjustments in their salaries. Ms. Glazer, Dr. Glazer, along with other superintendents in the county as well as in the state, all had a contract change that did result in an increase in their salary. Along those lines, there were other components of the contract, which included merit pay as well as two percent increases in over the life of the contract. And I can tell you that at this point in time, the only thing that was impacted for this district and on the budget for the taxpayers was the change in the salary cap, and nothing further.
And how much was the cap for us? Just...
Originally, in two thousand and ten, it was one hundred and sixty-seven five. And Karen, that is inclusive of having a high school, or that was their initial cost? So the five thousand dollars for the high school brought it to one seventy. The... Oh, okay, twenty-five. So it was one sixty-seven five, one sixty-seven five. Twenty-five hundred of that was for having a high school. The new salary cap is one ninety-one, five eighty-four.
And what's your current salary? Is that matched to issue one ninety-one?
The current salary is... It is one ninety-six, five eighty-four because there's a five thousand dollar... I don't know what you would call it, but adjustment for the high school.
And the principals, did the principals receive the salary increase as well?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The principals of the schools, did they receive the salary increases?
That's correct. So that, so we...
When did they receive? I don't know what the numbers are.
They received a two percent increase with a fifty basis point salary adjustment for certain healthcare needs and things like that inside the contract. Correct.
And my last question. The last union contract that you signed recently, what was the average increase for the union workers?
Yeah, can you, can you, I didn't catch. Can you say that a little bit louder?
The last union contract that you signed for the district, what was the average increase for the workers?
The last contract that actually we completed was the administrators' contract.
Not the last teachers'. General maintenance workers, custodians?
Oh, the custodians.
So I don't, I don't... So the custodians were two, was an average of two point four over three years on the contract. And then the administrators were two percent with a fifty basis point adjustment for salaries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish you to be heard? Okay, seeing none? Okay, any old business to come before the board? Any new business?
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters except from public discussion preserved pursuant to NJSA ten code four dash twelve, now therefore be resolved if the Board of Education recesses to close executive session. It's time to discuss student matters personnel. Be a further resolved. The result of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education. And when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Do we have a motion to close? Paul Don Baker?